It being past 7:30, the 2023 Annual Town Meeting is now called to order with a quorum of well over 30 voters. Good evening. I'm Pamela Thorne, the town clerk. Because our elected moderator, Jeffrey Jones, is absent from this meeting, the first order of business is to ratify the moderator's appointment of Joseph Davis to serve as deputy moderator for this meeting. As set forth in Section 2-1.7 of the town's bylaws, this will require a motion, a second, and a majority vote. Please note that if Mr. Davis's appointment is not ratified, we will have to elect a temporary moderator by a ballot vote. Do I have a motion? To ratify the appointment of Joseph Davis to serve as deputy moderator at this meeting until dissolved? So moved. Who moves it?
Edward Neal.
I need a name.
Neil.
Who is it?
Edward Neal.
Edward Neal. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Jody Harris, seconded. Having a motion and a second, all those in favor of Joseph Davis serving as deputy moderator for this meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. I have no doubt that the motion passes by a majority vote and declare that Joseph Davis has now been elected as deputy moderator for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. I will now administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties that come in upon you to the best of your ability in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Essex, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Constitution of the United States of America?
I do.
Thank you very much.
I may need this. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2023 Annual Meeting. We have, as people probably noticed, there's a long list of articles on tonight's warrant, so I'd like to get it going. We apologize for the late start, but with a large crowd, I'm not inclined to get a meeting started any earlier than it's necessary in order to allow people to participate. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. A quorum of more than 30 is confirmed. Assisting us tonight will be a series of tellers. Wendy Davis, whose temperament matters to me, so please treat her well. Rob Fitzgibbon, Karen Gerch, Karen Green, James Sanford, Jim Sanford, and Ellie Wolf. I want to thank all of them for volunteering their time. They are not the only tellers, however. As Vicky Cataldo, Aaron Kirchner, Diane Polly, and our one and only Terry Mansfield have volunteered to work as tellers in the event we have a secret ballot. All right. I'd like to start with everyone standing, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice forever. Please stay standing. This may be your only exercise. I'd like to take a moment to remember former town officials who have passed in the last year. Service of this town is a volunteer position. It is essential to how the town functions. It's what makes all of you enjoy living here as much as you do, and their time should be honored, not just in life, but in death also. So I'd like to honor David Doan, Gerald Muse, and Gordon Wright. I'd like to have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may sit.
They cannot be seated in the bleachers. They're going to have to find seats.
Right.
Because we don't have tables.
This is not going to be popular for those of you who have found the bleachers, but the bleachers are not set up for seating this evening, and we don't have tellers attending them, so you're going to have to find a place to sit or stand other than that. And sitting means sitting in a section in which voting takes place. And there are some seats left. Not a lot, but there's some right in front here. There's a couple over here. I see some hands raised, which I assume means there's a seat next to them, and they don't necessarily want to be acknowledged. We've got some seats over here. However, when you're looking for a seat, if you are a voter, if you have a green card, don't sit along the wall. There's a number of seats in this general area. I know sitting in front of the classroom was always something that people abhorred. However, if you come up here, I can see 10 seats just from where I'm standing right now, and a number over here also. The idea is not to inflict pain on a long night, so please find a seat. All right, while that is happening, I'd like to recognize certain town officials who are leaving their position this year. From elected officials, selectman Guy Bradford, Wesley Burnham, who is not leaving town office, but he is leaving his elected position, which he has served well for a very long time on the planning board. Samuel Crocker, Kimberly Drake, who's out here somewhere, I assume. Diane Koch and Michael McDonald. And appointed officials, Assessor Brenda Harold, Nathaniel Crosby, Ted Marshall, who has helped me more than once and whose service is greatly appreciated. Martha Mazzarino, Tim O'Leary, Tim, I don't know if you're out there. Lawrence Anderson. But most importantly, we are losing town clerk Pamela Thorne, who's about to be embarrassed by me, but Pam, would you please stand up for a moment? Would you please stand up for a moment? Pam has served the town with grace and distinction, not to mention accuracy, for several years now, and we will miss her deeply, and we wish you nothing but the best. All right. All right, I don't know, I don't see Bruce Tar and I don't see Ann-Margaret Ferrante, but if they are out there, welcome, but I don't think they're there. All right, let's talk about microphones. There are four microphones placed around the audience. There are also mobile microphones if you are incapable of getting to a microphone. So please don't think that because moving is a problem, we can't move to you. We want everyone to have the opportunity to speak, so let me know, and we'll get you a microphone. Now, let's talk about the microphones, though. If you know you're going to speak in connection with an article, please don't wait until others have lined up. Just get up and get in line, right? We've got four microphones here. All of them are waiting for customers to serve them, so please get up and get in line as quickly as you can, and that'll move the process along a little better. If you have a question that you would like to put to a town official, please direct that question to me. The moderator takes the question, and the moderator directs the question to the appropriate town official to answer. Don't assume that you have that prerogative, but trust me, I'm going to ask the right person to answer the question for you. Finally, I want to say something about civility and decorum. Town meeting is a place that allows us to speak freely on the articles that are put forth before you. It is not an excuse to attack people or to act in a manner that you would not want to be treated. Treat people with dignity, and you will have dignity returned to you, so please keep that in mind. Everybody who is presenting tonight has worked hard to get you the right information, and we'd appreciate it if you give them the respect that they have earned, even if you disagree with their opinion. All right, voting. Everyone in the voting sections ought to have a green card. If you don't, this is going to be a long night for you. When I call for a vote, we're going to have voice votes with a card, so express your voice, but put your card up so the tellers can count your vote. If we go to a secret written ballot, which has to be done by motion and requires a one-fifth vote in favor of doing so, then the process changes. We will start from the back of the room to the front. There will be two voting boxes set up front. The secret ballot voting tellers will kick into action. You have to bring your card with you. When you get in line, you'll be told when to come in line. Just wait for somebody, you'll tell. It starts from the back, and it'll work its way forward. Go to the appropriate station. If you're in the middle, pick one, right or left. As you get up here, you'll be handed a perforated card. Well, excuse me. First, you're going to go to a teller, hand him the green card to confirm that you're a voter. The teller will put an X on the back of your card. Then you'll be handed a voting ballot, which is a perforated card that has yes on one side of the perforation and no on the other. Tear it in half, put your vote in the ballot box, put your non-vote into the discard bin, which is to say the circular photo. Then go back to your seat. At the end of the voting process, the votes will be collected and taken to the library where they will be counted. You have the right to go and observe, so feel free to go to the library and watch them count the vote. Given the number of people here tonight, it's going to take a little while. That does not mean that we will sit and wait all night long for the vote to come back, so we'll probably kick into action here and move the agenda along, and at some point, someone will come in here with a magic envelope and say which side prevailed. All right. Non-voters, those of you who are not registered voters of the Town of Essex, which is to say you do not have a green card, you must sit along the wall with that wrestling pad or whatever it is, along the climbing area there. There are chairs set there. Those are for non-voters, so we don't inadvertently count the vote of somebody whose vote should not be counted. Now, there are certain non-residents who will be asked from time to time to speak. They are all town officials or town advisors, including town administrator Brendan Zubricki, town clerk Pamela Thorne, town council Greg Corbo, school superintendent Pam Bowdoin, and school district director of operations and finance Abbie Urbus. Unless someone objects when I ask them to answer a question, or they are called to talk for whatever reasons, I'm going to allow them to speak. They are your officials. Your tax dollars are paying for them to be here, so I'm going to give them the opportunity to present the information that they have to you. All right. The warrant was properly noticed and posted. Mr. Buttrick, where did you go? There you are, right in front of me. Would you please confirm that the Finance Committee supports all financial articles on the warrant?
I confirm.
Thank you. We move on to the...
He went away.
Oh, right, right, right. I skipped right there. You know what? I skipped right over it. I'll take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Second?
I approve.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are not going to sit here and read the warrant. All right, we're prepared to proceed to Article 1. Ms. Perine, are you ready?
I want to start by thanking everybody for coming this evening. It's nice to see so many faces in the crowd. I, Ruth R. Perine, move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a surveyor of bark and lumber.
Any discussion? I've been waiting for somebody to stand up to speak on this article. It's never happened. All those in favor, say aye, and hold your card up, please. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 2, Selectmen Pippin?
I, Peter D. Pippin, move that the town receive the reports of the town officials, boards, and committees contained in the annual report.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, and hand up your card, please. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 3, and before we get started on Article 3, I just want to thank everyone for your indulgence tonight, for getting started late. We obviously wanted to get as many people in here as possible, and it took longer than we expected.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like the opportunity to invite Attorney Greg Corbo, who's town council, to speak on behalf of the regional school district budget articles before they're presented. We provided a... We have not provided. Attorney Corbo is going to speak to a frequently asked questions about the override and the mechanisms.
Let's start with getting the article moved, and then we'll go to that.
Okay.
Yes.
I, Teresa Whitman, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $289,165 for the purpose of supplementing the Manchester Essex Regional School District's fiscal year 2024 assessment, provided that the amount authorized herein shall be contingent upon the vote at the town election to assess additional real estate and personal property taxes in accordance with the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called.
Second?
Second.
All right, before we go to discussion, Selectman Perine, I believe you have a motion for me? Or a request?
Do we...
Just a request is fine.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, just a request that we allow Attorney Corbo to speak about the override process and some frequently asked questions.
All right. Attorney Corbo, if you could just give a moment, Greg, and just explain what the override process is. As all of you have noticed, Article 3 calls for an override of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Corbo, town council for the Town of Essex, and I just wanted to take a couple minutes of your time to explain, you know, what it is that some of the terms that you're looking at and will be hearing about tonight actually mean, and what the consequences of the various votes on these articles might be should you choose to vote one way or another. Many of you are probably familiar with what Proposition 2 and 1/2 is, but for those of you who are not, Proposition 2 and 1/2 is a Massachusetts state law that establishes how much money the town can raise through the collection of real estate and personal property taxes. This is referred to as the tax levy. So every year, the town levies taxes upon all of the residents based on the value of their real estate and their personal property. And according to state law Proposition 2 and 1/2, that tax levy can be increased by 2 and 1/2% each year over the previous year, subject to certain exclusions. Now, the significance of this is that the tax levy forms the most significant basis of revenue that the town has available to meet its expenses on a yearly basis. And so the tax levy, combined with other items of income, then form the basis of the town's budget. And in order to proceed, the town needs to have a balanced budget, which means that all of its expenses must equal its revenue. So there are circumstances from time to time, however, where a 2 and 1/2% increase in real property taxes may not be enough to meet the expenses of the town for a particular year. And in that case, the law authorizes us to do what's called an override. And what this does is it authorizes the town to increase the amount it can collect in real estate taxes by a certain number voted by the voters both at town meeting and a town election. Once that number is passed by a majority vote at both of those meetings, then that amount gets added to the town's base tax levy and becomes the basis for the town's tax assessments going forward. And in each year, when the tax levy is increased by 2 and 1/2%, that amount is included within your levy limit. So this results in a permanent increase in the amount that the town can raise by taxes. So in this particular year, we're doing something different than we usually do with the regional school district budget. So usually, you have an article in front of you for the Manchester Essex Regional School District budget as approved by the Regional School District Committee. However, the number that was approved by the school committee was higher than town officials believed could be paid by the town within the tax levy. So what the town is proposing is two articles for each of the regional school district budgets. One is the traditional article, which is to appropriate tax money to pay for the expenses of the district based on what town officials think the town can afford within the current levy limit. Then there is an additional article for each school budget that asks that you appropriate an additional amount, subject to approval of an override. So what you're going to do is, in Article 3, you're actually voting the supplemental amount first. This is the amount that town officials believe cannot be paid within the levy limit, and so if Article 3 is approved by a majority vote at town meeting, then at the election next week, that question will be in front of the voters. And if that also is approved by the voters, then that number gets added to whatever you vote to approve with respect to the school committee's budget. The second article, Article 4, is the main part of the budget. If Article 3 passes and Article 4 passes, then you've approved the school committee's budget, and then that becomes the amount that you pay for the district assessment for fiscal year 2024. If, however, you do not approve both Article 3 and Article 4, or you vote to approve some lesser amount than was approved by the school committee, because you are a part of a regional school district, anything other than a yes vote on both of those articles constitutes a rejection of the school committee's budget. And what happens in that case is then it sets in motion a procedure whereby the budget goes back to the school committee to reconsider its original assessment. The school committee can either agree to lower its assessment, or it can decide that it wants to stick with its original assessment. Either way, once the school committee makes a recertification of the budget, it would come back to this town meeting for another vote. If both this town meeting and the Manchester town meeting approve the recertified budget, then that becomes the budget for fiscal year 2024. In the event that one or both of the communities do not approve the recertified budget, then what happens is we have a third town meeting, which is a super-town meeting that is comprised of residents of both Essex and Manchester, and a majority of the voters at that meeting can vote to either approve or disapprove that budget. If at the end of this whole process, that super-town meeting cannot come together and approve that budget, then the final failsafe is that the state Department of Education steps in and gives you what they call a 1/12 budget, which is a month-to-month budget based on what your budget was last year. So I hope that sort of helps people to clarify, you know, what it is that they're voting on. Understand that Articles 3 and 4 are a package for the total school committee budget for Manchester Essex, and Articles 5 and 6 are a package for the vocational school district budget. So hopefully that helps, but I am here to answer any additional questions that may come up as you start to discuss this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. All right, any discussion on the motion? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, everyone. As chairperson of the school district, it is my opportunity, as I present this article to you, to share some great things happening with your investment. MRSD is Boston Magazine's fourth-best district in the Commonwealth. Manchester Essex Regional High School is among the top 5% of high schools nationwide. This is exceptional. But more locally, you know, aside from the flashy tidbits, more locally, we have an incredible principal at EES this year who's helping students develop as leaders and take personal ownership of this building and its care, as well as initiate community partnerships with the senior center and the open-door mobile market. We have a crosstown district partnership between the two elementary principals that's helping kids in our towns connect earlier through things like the combined fifth-grade play. This will improve school culture and student experience as they move forward. And the high school held its first-ever STEAM night, where businesses, organizations, and student groups from both the high school and the middle school came together to showcase opportunities and learning in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. This is the good stuff. We have a strong school district. I don't think there's much argument there. And Essex supports education. We've shown that by passing the operating budget each year and passing building projects. But this year is unique in that the ask is for an override to fund the operating budget. Nobody likes an override, least of all me having to stand here and present it for a vote, perhaps. Essex hasn't had an override ask for a long time, and it is uncomfortable for all of us to consider, and I know that. People have been through this, up and down, inside and out, over the months, but I'd like to share two things that were offered by Selectman Bradford in a Board of Selectmen meeting earlier this year that really stuck with me after he had been on the collaboration team working through this process for quite some time. First was that we have to accept the assumption that the 2 and 1/2% limitation of Prop. 2 and 1/2 simply doesn't work for school districts. It's a structural constraint, and overrides are occasionally necessary. I would add to this that we're not in a unique situation. Districts across the state are dealing with this just as we are. And the second was that the community wants level services, not cuts. There is a desire by our community to maintain the scope of program we have here. And I would add that that's exactly what I learned in serving on the Strategic Planning Committee. There was nobody coming to us saying, "We have too much going on," and the only time that I've heard that is for reasons of financial concern. So the only question left is whether the district has done everything possible to trim the fat before bringing forth the budget. Have they sharpened the pencil? That's my least favorite term in this whole process. Have they sharpened the pencil? Or are there more things that really could be slashed? The answer is simple. At a 2.85% spending increase, there is no fat left to trim for a district of this caliber. Districts run at 3 and 1/2% to 4% spending growth statewide. We're at 2.85% this year. And yeah, luck favored us this year with healthcare numbers coming in late in the game, nice and low. We can't expect that every year, but we got it this year. The favorable teacher contract was not so much luck, but the outcome of a lot of hard work, and will benefit us not for three, but four years. This is responsible stewardship of our collective investment. This is what it costs to run a district of this caliber, the district we and our other town partner have created together over more than two decades. And if this caliber of program is truly not what our town can bear, if we need to come from here to here, we can have that conversation, but we can't have it alone. This is a two-town conversation. That kind of reduction doesn't come by looking hard at efficiencies. I've been trying all year to make that conversation happen. We're making progress toward it. It is critical. I think moving forward, it simply won't be an option not to have that conversation, but let's not jeopardize the program for this group of students as we work that out. To get us out of override territory is not just 289,000 in cuts, it's 2.7 times that to account for Manchester's portion, for a total of 780K. That's not trimming fat, that's taking a chunk off the cut of meat. It's true that our town has limited resources, and the burden on taxpayers can be heartbreaking at times, but the answer is not to strip things down to a bare-bones district. Let's rise together. I want to support an economic development plan that brings revenue into our town. I want to support efforts to get seniors who are struggling the help they need to stay in their homes on fixed incomes. Tell me where and how, and I'll do it, and I know you all will, too. We'll be there. That's what Essex is about. With that, I hope you agree, and we'll vote yes on this article.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben. Before Speaker Before speaker, remember to state your name and your address.
My name is Ben Buttrick. I'm at 81B Chote Street. I'm also a member of the Finance Committee, though I'm speaking as a resident. During this meeting, you're likely to hear from many people who are going to present different angles of the district override vote and really make it more complicated than it needs to be. There is only one factor necessitating this override, and that is the fact that we have a growing ratio of students in the district coming from the town of Essex. That's caused our portion of the district's cost to increase by more than usual, and this has been happening over the past four fiscal years. The regional school district makes up about 50% of our town's budget. There's a formula in the regional agreement that dictates what each town, Essex and Manchester, pay relative to each other. The growth of students coming from Essex has meant that when the total assessment to both towns, and this is an example, Teresa mentioned 2.85% as the total town assessment, it has meant that for Essex, our portion has been growing closer to 5, and in fact, exceeding 5%. So this is a structural problem for the town of Essex. We can't do much about it. It's driven by the formula, the apportionment formula in the regional agreement. The district has responded by spending from reserves to help out Essex. They've done that over the last four years. The district has spent a total of 1.29 million from reserves toward operations, and that's been very helpful over the past years for our town's budget. But they can't keep doing that over and over again, especially when you need reserves to pay for expenses such as the school, which we know is an issue. So what this override is seeking is really attributed to the district discontinuing use of reserves and the Essex apportionment, and they're interrelated. We have more kids coming from Essex. That's the reality. So there's not much we can do, other than reopening the regional agreement. That's not in the scope of the meeting tonight. What I ask is that you all, I urge you all to vote yes for this override, and failure to pass this override risks degradation to the program, which I don't think any of us want, as Teresa mentioned. So thank you.
The last speakers were very clear because they were standing up next to a microphone. Could we please have everyone who is speaking stand for a microphone? Thank you.
Yes, that's a good suggestion, and this really goes to town officials when you're speaking. If you could stand, please, thank you. Next.
Hi, Tom DeMaio, 35 Water Street. Just some facts. These come directly from the school budgets. In fiscal year 2013, there were 1,574 students in the system. There's been a 22.4% decrease over 2013 if we look at the 2024 budget. So we're educating 22.4% less kids. In 2013, there were 98.5 classroom teachers. In 2024, there were 96. In 2013, there were 29.2 teaching assistants. In 2024, 29. And the budget buster in 2013, there were 17.8 special ed teachers. In 2024, there were 31 special ed teachers plus two teen chairs. I don't expect there to be a 22.4% decrease in the number of classroom teachers, and I don't expect the special ed teachers to substitute for the full-time classroom teachers. But I do expect to see slightly different numbers than that. This does not reflect a system that is grappling with a population of students that's going down. There is no evidence here that this system is dealing with this. That's my comment.
Hi, everybody. How you doing? Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. I'm a former member of the Finance Committee, a current library trustee, and my wife also served on the school committee. And listen, I want to just thank you all very much for coming. Town meetings are very much like kale or jogging, unpalatable and often painful. But look, it's really good for us to all be here. This is really great to see that it's so crowded. It is a privilege to get this opportunity for us to be the legislative body for our, you know, this is a unique form of government in New England, as you know, the town meeting. And I thank you all for being here, even the people that will refuse to speak to me after I get through speaking right now. Okay, so budget birds' eye view, and I'll keep this under five minutes, don't worry. Fifth school year 2016, the school district budget was 23 million. The town of Essex's share was just shy of 7.5 million, and that represented 40% of our budget, that excluded the excluding capital funds budget. Today, fiscal year 24, the school district budget is 30 million. The expenditures represent 51% of our town's excluding capital funds 20 million dollar budget. The Boils Down Two and the school committee chair and the head of the FinCom said this, the cost of public education rises each year at 4%. It is overwhelming the town's ability to pay for it, or for the voters of the tax base to pay for it. It's a known issue. But part of the problem is that this is a question of fairness. I mean, our town council talked about, gave a great synopsis about the levy limit, Prop 2.5, otherwise known as Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). He is, is that every single other one of our departments have to follow, have to be under that 2.5 levy limit. The district is different. The police department, for example, its increase this year is less than 1%. Town employees, their COLA, their cost of living adjustment, was 2.5% this year, yet district non-union employees get 4%. Look, I'm a library trustee, like, our director has done an absolutely stellar job of providing educational opportunities for our Essex children. I can't get her the raise commensurate for her worth. Look, and you're going to hear a lot tonight about levies or level. There's nothing level about the average Essex homeowner's tax liability rising by $662. There's been a brief powwow with a member of the Finance Committee hearing, it might go up to $819. You're also going to hear a lot about reserves and like relying on reserves is risky and dangerous. Our reserves are in fact, are almost 3.5 million. It's the third highest it's ever been in 10 years. We have an AA-plus bond rating. Well, what's an acceptable level of reserves given the recent inflation pressures that we've all been under? Can it be 3 million? Can we, what's a good enough bond rating? Can we get down to like AA or B+? I mean, I think it's perfectly appropriate to question why we have the equivalent of champagne reserves on a beer budget. And I also, just a couple more things. I want to be clear with everyone. Funding this district, we work for tips. Transportation, insurance, pensions, and sped. Transportation and insurance are 24% of the budget. So just keep that in mind. Now, a couple of quick things on overrides. Since 1989, there have been 29 overrides in Essex, of which only 13, less than 50%, have passed. Since 2000, the district's two towns have had four school overrides, all of which have passed. This is the fifth. It's going to be a little bit of scaremongering. You're going to hear we don't have a lot of yes votes tonight, you know, basically absolute mad catastrophe is going to happen, the stars are going to fall, the seas are going to rise, Apple Street's going to flood, and we're going to have like zombies just running around all over town. Let me remind you, last May, the Penticott Regional School District voted no to their override, and there's no zombies in Groveland, as far as I know. Marblehead last June voted down a school override. The Hornets just beat the Marblehead Magicians last week, 7-5 in girls lacrosse. Marblehead didn't slip into the Atlantic. And Tony Newton, Newton, this is like Newton, you have to understand, Newton education-wise is like the Marcia to our Jan Brady. In March, they just voted down their own school override. So they're going to scare you with threats of having to use the, oh my God, we're going to go last, one minute?
20 seconds.
20 seconds. Look, they're going to scare you about like last year's budget, additional town meetings, so on and so forth. I just want to answer with like what Bill Belichick would say, do your job.
Point of order? Point of order. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Can we invite Pam and Avi to respond to the first commentary and Avi to respond to the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm allowing the point of order, and school superintendent is going to speak to the first question.
Yep. So I'm just, I don't have the FY13 numbers in front of me. Good evening, everybody. But what I can recall or share with you is that between FY13 and FY16, we were pursuing an operational override to address the increasing enrollment, because we had experienced a 28% increase in enrollment, the bubble that we've been speaking about over the past 10 years, first when it was coming in and now when it was going out. In our budget materials this year, we have tracked our enrollment and staffing changes from FY19 to FY24. FY19, when we were beginning to feel the impact on classrooms for the bubble moving out, meaning we had about 280 to 300 students additional that came in between '08 and '13, and those students matriculated through the system and have exited, and we've had smaller classes coming in. Long story short, between FY19 and FY24, we reduced general ed staff, so math, science, art, music by eight heads or a 9% reduction. We increased special education staff by five heads or a 10.9% increase in inclusion. Intervention and specialists required supports for students who need remediation, reading support, math support to be able to make grade level. We increased those positions by 2.7 or 9.7%. So essentially, we've been able to address the enrollment exit through the general education staff, reducing approximately one teacher for every 20 students that exited over that time period. However, we did not gain full budget value because we needed to add mandated special education positions to provide services to students who are entitled to them.
Tina, I think you're next.
Tina Lane, 21 Lanes Road. I wrote it down. I think if more people watched their tax dollars, how their tax dollars were being spent, we wouldn't be seeking an override. We are here because of our own neglect. Every year, the school district begins their budget discussion, assuming a 3.5% increase. In a prop 2.5 environment, this is unsustainable, so their solution is the towns should plan for smaller, more frequent overrides to fund their budget, because in their words, they don't have a spending problem, they have a revenue problem, and it is up to the towns to figure out how to find the funds. Whether or not this override passes, I want to comment about the need for transparency from the school district moving forward. Today, our property taxes are due. It's about $16,000 for my family annually. So $8,000 will go to fund the town, and $8,000 will go to fund the school district. Some in this town will pay more, and some will pay less, but every home or business owner factors it into their own budget. When half of my taxes go to the district, I feel I have a right to ask questions and expect clear answers. I am a taxpayer, and I ask questions of both the town and the school district. The difference is, when I ask the town, I get a response, often within the hour, by the next day at most. I can ask follow-up questions, or sometimes another person is CC'd into the conversation to help answer my specific question. In contrast, when I contact the school district with a question, the minimum amount of information is volunteered after several days. It's tedious. I once had to file a public records request, which is their version of a Freedom of Information request, to ensure I would get a response within 10 days. I have no children in the district, but my $8,000 should grant me transparency to understand how my tax dollars are spent. At a school committee meeting in December, in response to a committee member's recommendation of fiscal transparency, the chair stated that the term transparency has changed over time. Through the moderator, I would like to ask the school committee chair to explain how the term transparency has changed and what that means for the taxpayers who seek information. Thank you.
To the voters on the back wall, you really need to be either in a seat or along the sidewalls, because where you are there, we have no tellers, so when we have a standing vote, you won't be voting. So I suggest that you either find a seat, and there are a number of seats, or stand along the sidewall where we do have tellers. But you'll save yourself a lot of hassle if you just sit down. Anyway, Tina, to the extent that was a motion, I'm going to deny it, it's beyond the scope. But thank you, I appreciate the suggestion. All right, next, please. To the extent your request to me was a motion, okay, I just wanted to, oratory is fine. Oratory is fine.
You said that if I were wanting to ask a question of someone, I need to go through you.
Correct.
So I said, through the moderator, I would like to ask the school committee chair to explain how the term transparency has changed and what that means for taxpayers who seek information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually got it wrong, you're next, so.
My name is Robbie Billsbury. I'm at 126 Eastern Avenue in Essex. Been a resident here since 2001. I've been teaching in the Manchester Essex Regional School District since '98, and I know there's going to be a lot of, you know, numbers and things like that. You know, my heart sings when I think of my job. I love my students, I love our school district. I know we have done an amazing job with our kids, and I love your description of our school in that, you know, we try to provide as much as we possibly can. But I just want you to understand that I'm a foreign language teacher, I'm a Spanish teacher. We had a robust K through 12 program that allowed us to offer, you know, Spanish at the AP Literature level for many years, and that is still going on, thankfully. But our, you know, our K through six program for foreign language has been completely cut. So it's not like we're asking for things that are beyond what is normal in a school. And it's actually, we're pretty stripped down as it is, and I can speak from experience and kind of how it impacts our kids that I see before me. There may also be some ideas about class sizes, and I just want to say that I've been teaching since '98, and class sizes do change. You know, I have an AP Spanish Literature, and I think, you know, Pam was going to give some information, that it's a small class this year, and it is still running. And it's running because it's an opportunity for kids to speak Spanish at the AP Literature level. Next year, that class goes up to 16 kids. This year, it's smaller because of COVID, the level of Spanish kind of dropped a little bit, and some kids weren't able to take it. But I just want you to know that as a teacher, you know, my heart does kind of break with cuts that have already happened. I feel like we owe it to the children that we, these are our communities. We need to educate the kids in our communities, and it's our job to do that, and I hope that we all pass this override.
Elwell, 45 Forest Ave. I know none of us want to see our taxes go up. They've gone up an awful lot since we've been here, and it sucks. But with kids in the district, I can say that if there's one reason I want my taxes to go up, it's because we approved this school budget. Many of us moved here or decided to live here because we have great schools, and the things that get stripped away if we don't pass this override are material. We stripped away elementary school Spanish. My fourth grader used to come home and read. My fourth grader used to come home and recite Spanish words, and she doesn't do that anymore. But it goes beyond that. It's like mental health services and things these kids need to strive. We moved here about eight years ago from East Boston, and had we stayed there, we would have been in class sizes that were double the size we're in now. I have a kid with executive function issues, and she would have been left behind in those classrooms. So it's a really special service that we provide these kids in this town. And, you know, I get it, I know it's expensive and it's hard to bear, but like the kids will be the ones who suffer from this. I know I speak for a lot of moms here because I've talked to a lot of them, and I think a lot of us are staunchly in favor of supporting this override, and it's because like we want our kids to have the same educational experiences that really every kid should be entitled to. There's been a lot of talk around town about class sizes and ratios and competing with private schools, and the reality is like, that's what makes this a great place to live and a great place for your kids to go to school, that your kid isn't in a classroom with 50 other kids. I don't think it's a bad thing to be competitive with a private school when your kids can get a public school education that is like on par with a private school education. So I just wanted to say like, I'm staunchly in favor of the override, and I hope everyone here will support it.
Dawn?
Dawn Burnham, 22 County Road. I'd just like to ask Mr. Moderator, why Teresa was not allowed to answer Tina's question?
It was out of scope.
I don't understand.
It was out of scope.
Excuse me?
It was out of scope. It was out of scope.
How is that out of scope if there are people in this room who have asked the school for information and not gotten it, and they want to know why? I don't find that out of scope.
The question was not for any specific piece of information, it was about an opinion of somebody unrelated to the information that was being solicited. If someone has a question about the budget, please bring it. We have the Director of Finance here to answer this question.
I find it interesting because Teresa stepped up to the microphone to answer the question, and you denied it.
I did deny it. But if someone has a question with specifics, I'm more than happy to put it to the school.
Mark Whitman, 8 Luftgen Street. So I took the opportunity to look and see how overrides have been handled in our community and around Essex. The last time Essex passed a school-related override was May 9th, 2005. All right? Since then, our 15 neighboring communities have passed 37 overrides specifically for schools, to the tune of nearly $20 million. Bravo to the current school committee, the past school committees, and our town administrators for all their work to keep Essex going without having to do an override for nearly 20 years. Bravo to you guys. Because everyone worked together and made sure that Essex was a place where people could raise families and come and live, and that the generations later could come and live here. Because guess what, folks? It's not a cheap town to live in. And if you want your kids and your grandkids to live here, they better have an education like we get here. If you look at the per student cost, guess what? It's on par with all these other neighboring communities that we have. There are some that are higher, there are some that are lower, but guess what? We're right in the middle. We're not having more than 20 students in a class, and there are special cases, sure. But that's because they're special education. I'm glad that we have one-on-one education for some students that didn't have that opportunity when I was in school. They got stuck in a small room in the corner and got made fun of. They don't have that anymore. I get it, it's expensive. It's really freaking expensive to live here. I'm paying $18,000, I'm right with you, Mrs. Lane. But I tell you what, Teresa and the school committee have been available to answer every one of your questions. Everyone. She has spent countless hours speaking to any person that wants to ask the question. And if you don't get information, it's because she legally cannot give it to you. Transparency is giving you every single answer to every question you might have. You have a problem? Do I still have time or am I done? Thank you. I came here to speak in favor of this override because we can't keep kicking the can down the street. Our neighboring communities have passed override after override. It's great what's been done, but if we're going to maintain and be a great community, one that other people want to come to and that you want to stay in, then we need to do this override. The building's falling down, folks. There's a brand-new school next door. Our school district partners, they've already passed two overrides in that amount of time. We had the opportunity in 2012 or 2013 to do it, and we didn't. Now's the time to do it. If your costs are the exact same as they were in 2014, 2015, I want to talk to you and your financial advisor because that's amazing, because it's certainly not the case for me. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nina McKinnon, 1 Lowland Farm Road. I do want to disclose that I'm a member of the Essex Finance Committee. I am speaking as a resident. As a member of the Finance Committee, I feel I do have a good amount of knowledge for how our town's budget is created and the weight of the school's budget on the town. And I understand the importance of budget and spending monitoring so we're fiscally accountable and responsible to our taxpayers. In review of the district's last three years, the actual number spent has been less, sometimes significantly, than what has been budgeted to spend. The district's fiscal year '21 actual spending was 651,000 less than what was budgeted to spend. The fiscal year's '22 actual spending was 252,985,000 less than what was budgeted to spend. In fiscal year '23, it was 290,000. This is an amount of almost $1.2 million. Mr. Moderator, would the school committee chair please explain the reasoning for creating a budget based on the previous year's budget spending rather than the actual amount spent when historically these budgets have been overstated? Further, would the school committee chair please provide a simple explanation for what regular financial reporting is provided from the district to monitor the spending throughout the year, especially when historically the spending has been hundreds of thousands of dollars under budget? Thank you.
All right. May I invite Avi Urbis as a point of order to respond to a point of clarification and then respond?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Avi Urbis, and Finance Director. First, we're in fiscal '23 right now. We don't have budget-to-actual numbers that are finalized, but we have done periodic budget-to-actual updates at our public school committee meetings. So any number that you've heard is as of the last update, which was in January. In terms of the broader question of what happens if there are savings, those are savings that get passed back to taxpayers. We don't keep that for ourselves. It can go into reserves, but it goes in temporarily. The state has a statute of any amount of excess of reserves that have to be given back. In the past 10 years, that's only happened two times, and in both times, those monies, in accordance with the statute, went to reduce the cost to taxpayers by lowering the assessment. So it's a very rare occasion that the amount that we save at the end of the year is going to exceed that level, but when it does, it comes back. Either way, what it does is it allows us to make sure that we have stability from year to year, and we make sure that we bring that number in as low as possible. We always do want to make sure that we don't bring it in so low that we have to come back in the middle of a fiscal year to say, we ran out of money. We certainly think that taxpayers would not look favorably about that. But as you heard previously, this is a 2.85% budgetary increase over the past seven years. The growth rate has been 3.17% in terms of the cost to taxpayers. So we're doing everything we can to keep that number down, and when we can't keep it down further, we do use any additional reserve funds, which have been committed well in excess of what the state statute requires to make sure that the tax bill to community members is low. And part of the reason we're here for this override request this year is because at this point, we cannot plug the several hundred thousand dollar, seven, I think we heard the number, it's $800,000 gap between what we would need to pay if we didn't have it. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
To finish answering the question that was directed directly to me, the reason that we do the budget process the way we do, a lot of the timeline is defined by the regional agreement. But in terms of the way this works, our superintendent and leadership team work together to determine the needs of the buildings, to determine what can stay and what can go, if there are people who are going to be retiring out, managing personnel incoming and outgoing, and they determine what the needs are for an initial ask. At that point, they present it to the school committee. We review it, we have a chance to review it outside of meeting, we have a chance to discuss it in meeting. We then have a public forum available first in December in Manchester, and we have another meeting where we discuss it some more. We all look very closely at what we could get rid of or what we need to get rid of. And then there's another public forum here, and we continue to go through the process. We have to vote on a final budget, though, before we have all the information. The timing is unfortunate. Healthcare numbers, we don't have before we vote our initial budget in. That's a high watermark, and then we go through the process and reduce it as we need to. In terms of the, throughout the year, what we offer for accounting and understanding of where the spending is, at the suggestion of one of our new members this year, we have added in three budget-to-actual report outs. This year, it was in November, January, and we have one coming up in either May or June. So that is considerable in terms of change and its progress for our district.
Are you next? Thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Antonella Muniz. I live on Harlow Street. So since we're talking about budget, I'm sure that a lot of us are aware that there are two fields in Manchester that need to be funded and replaced, and I'm just wondering if those turf fields are included in the budget and override, because we know they need to be replaced, and there's been quite a bit of discussion that it's going to happen this summer. But I believe that the school committee is going to ask us to fund these fields in about six months, so it's an additional cost to the towns. Further, the school committee did sponsor an article at the Manchester Town Meeting asking if they could borrow to fund the fields, and I'm just curious why it's not on our warrant as a separate question if it's not included in the budget and the override. The turfs need to get done. It's a cost that we know is coming down the road, and we need to pay for it. In December, I believe the school committee was discussing or had decided maybe to use reserves. Reserves are funds from the taxpayers that we've already paid, and I believe a lot of us were in favor of that because it would cost us nothing in addition. However, something changed, and now it looks like they're going to come to the town separately to fund the turf replacement. And so I feel like we're sort of double paying for that. I would really just like a thoughtful discussion about field replacement funding, if that's possible.
Okay, let me just make sure I understand the question. I think your fundamental question is, you want to know whether the current override numbers include funds for replacement of the fields, and that is a question we're going to put to the school superintendent or Mr. Urbis. I leave it to the two of you as to who is more appropriate.
I'll give it a shot because I don't think we need to get, we can't really get into all the details of the funding mechanisms of that. So the simple answer is, the fields are not included in this override. That is a separate matter we are working with both towns on. At this point, we're committed to replace both fields. The funding mechanism each town is choosing to use is still under review. So I don't know where we will be in the fall, but we will be going forward with either a combination of borrowing or reserves to replace the fields. Highland Fields on track to get underway as soon as school lets out this year.
Could I just offer a follow-up, maybe just a comment?
Yes.
If I'm to vote on a budget and there's this big bill coming, it's hard for me to do that if you're not telling me that it's coming down the pipeline or that it's included. It's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're next.
Hi, Linda Osborne, 2 Prospect Street. Many generations of an Essexite here, so I go way back. However, the taxes are getting out of control. We need to really, really look this over. I'm a retired teacher. I love teaching. I love the school systems. I have supported them for years. But I think we have money. I don't think we need to do an override. Last meeting, they stood, I won't say who, stood up and said, oh, don't worry about it, folks, we get over $500,000 from Conoma Point. Oh, we only need to do what, 289? Why isn't this money available to help our schools? My other thought is, back at the end of 2022 Town Meeting, there's over $9 million in reserve fund. Where did that go? I feel like we have to say no just once in a while. Oh, yes, I know, we haven't had 2.5 override for years. Kudos to Essex. I mean, that means we're doing something right. Our kids are not suffering. We have less kids now, but we're paying more. I get it, we have to still keep programs going and special ed, insurance, teachers' retirements, I know all of it. But for this amount of money, 300,000, less than 300,000, we must have that somewhere. And I, yes, can I ask for an explanation about why we can't use the Conoma Point money or we can't use the over $9 million from last year? Thank you.
I'm going to ask Mr. Buttrick to respond to the question about the use of the reserves, the Conoma Point reserves.
Ben Buttrick, Chair of the Essex Finance Committee. Just addressing the question of use of reserves, I think it's important to understand that what we're discussing tonight is an operating budget override. An operating budget is annual cost. Reserves, which we are blessed with reserves, and we have been utilizing reserves, get used for capital expenditures, which are one-time expenditures. The problem is that when we have a budget, an annual budget, whether it be the town or the school district, it's recurring. So you get into the issue of having to spend down your reserves. It's not a best practice to spend from reserves on your operating budget. So that's the...
Thank you. I believe, does she have time left?
I don't know what to say about that, but I'm still wondering where all the $9 million went, and I still didn't get an answer about the $500,000 from Conoma Point. Why can't we use that money, the 500? I don't get it.
I want to make sure I understand. Are you asking a question or are you making a stunt?
I can't figure out why, common sense, why we can't use the money we have coming into this town that are killing our tax system. Now, wait till you get golden age like me, woo, you know? It's getting harder and harder, but I'd like to know why we can't reach into these pockets and pay for this. We don't need to do an override. Sorry.
Which one of you is first? Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Sullard, the town treasurer, is going to respond to the question.
Town accountant. So just to kind of, I mean, there's a lot of numbers being thrown around tonight about reserve funds that we have on hand, and so there's a couple of different buckets. There's a concept called free cash, which is every year, the state certifies the revenue we've earned compared to what we projected, the expenses we spent compared to what we projected, and the difference there becomes our free cash. So in the last few years, we've been fortunate that that number's been really high. A couple of years ago, it was $2.8 million, and that was really driven by the fact that that was on the heels of COVID. So if you think about what was going on in the world back then, we kind of slowed everything down, we stopped spending money, and on top of that... We stopped spending money. And on top of that, we got an influx of federal and state money, which led our free cash to come in at $2.8 million instead of a normal number, $1.4, $1.5 million. Because we were still coming out of COVID, and we were being conservative, we didn't spend that money down on various things. We held on to it for an extra year. So last year, we certified about $2.3 million in free cash. I would predict that we will be probably closer to $1.7 or so this year. We don't like to tie it down, because there's a lot of moving parts. But when people speak about things like the Conomo Point money, we did, we, nine years ago, or probably seven or eight years ago, we used to get $100,000 in rent for Conomo Point. Now we get like $600,000. But that money has been largely used to supplement the growth in the budget over the last six or seven years. We also took on meals tax that produces $300,000. That money has been largely absorbed into the budget process. We saved $300,000 by moving to a regional dispatch center. That money has been largely absorbed into the budget. So this idea that there's $500,000 floating around from free, in the Conomo Point revenue, it's already absorbed into the budget. So, you know, we have free, the free cash I just spoke of. Then we have a stabilization fund, which has roughly a million dollars in it. And, you know, I don't know how many folks are aware, but we have a reserve policy. And our reserve policy, which was put in place a couple of years ago, says that we will, and this is based on input from our auditors, input from our financial advisors who help us with bonding, and from the Department of Revenue. These folks have said to us, you should be targeting 5% of your general fund operating budget in general stabilization funds. You should also be targeting 5% of your general fund operating budget in free cash. And that is, you know, roughly where we are. If we look at our current year budget proposal, we are at 5.89% in what we have in free cash. And we're pretty much in, right in line with the general stabilization. So having those high reserves is what helped us most recently, when we went for bonding on the Public Safety Building. That extra reserve and stabilization money helped us maintain our AA+ bond rating, which we came close to losing for other reasons, but it helped us maintain that bond rating. And that translates to dollars in your pocket. Because instead of getting a 2.19% loan, we would have had a 2.6, 2.7% loan. That's a whole lot of savings to you over all those years. So there is a plan and a thought process behind these reserves we have. And as Ben mentioned, you know, these operating expenses are year after year. So if we dip into $400,000 of free cash this year, where does that $400,000 come from next year? And because of what Ben spoke about earlier with apportionment, our budget is going to go up more from the district next year. So it won't be 400, it will be 450 or 480. And so you don't want to get addicted to the free cash, because at some point, you're not going to have it anymore. And then you're going to clobber it over the head with needing $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 to replace reserve funds that are no longer there. So, you know, I hope that just, you know, sheds a little more light on the reserves and the stabilization in general.
Thank you. You next. Ed, can you hold one second? I just want to take one moment to introduce Senator Tar, who is here, and I had not seen him hang out in the corner. We appreciate Bruce, you showing up, as always. Eddie, please.
Neil, 15 Western Ave. Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Hold on a minute. I want to take a look at the room and get a sense as to how many people are speaking. I hear you, but I just want to make sure that people have been heard. I'm going to take the second. We're going to take the motion. All those, okay, we are voting here. This is a two-thirds vote. We are voting to advance the question to a vote. So the vote is for the procedural motion to move it forward, which is a two-thirds vote. So I'm going to ask people to hold up your cards, please, and say aye, if you're voting aye. And then when we get to no, we'll go to no. So all those in favors, and hold up one second. I'm going to say it for the third and last time. If you are standing in the back of the room and not on the side or in a seat, your vote will not be counted. We don't have tellers watching the back of the room. There's plenty of seats. There's about, there's at least 15 seats within my eyesight. Okay, sorry. Okay. Is everybody ready? All right. All those in favor, say aye and raise your card, please. All those opposed, motion carries, we're going to move forward with the actual article that is pending. All right. All those in favor, the article has been moved, so it's too late to make a motion. No, actually, I've started the process of asking for the vote.
I make a motion to have a secret ballot on this article?
It's too late. It's out of order. It's too late. So all those in favor, say aye and hold up your card. And this is on the, this is on the, this is... Sorry, sorry for the confusion. Okay, we're going to try this again. All those in favor, please raise your, all, all those in favor of the article for the override, Article Three, Article Three, which is what we've been debating. Yes, Mr. Neil.
To have a secret ballot on this question, and the moderator needs to rule or have a vote on whether or not we have a secret ballot before the call of the vote.
I said that I had, just to clarify, I had said that I had called the vote already, and the motion was not made until after I had called the vote. So it was late. So it was too late, in other words. The motion was made too late. We are voting on the article, which is Article Three, which is whether the school override, as proposed, is being approved by the town or not, or taken to ballot, technically. So we are now voting on Article Three. All those in favor, say aye and raise your card, please. All those against? Okay, we're going to, tellers, you are being put to work. We're going to do this again. All those in favor, please put your cards up.
So say we're going to have a standing vote and ask the tellers to come forward.
Okay, all, all those with, have your cards up, please stand, and the tellers, please come forward. You want to do this side, and I'll do this side?
Those people standing, I mean, this guy cannot count without standing in the row there. So I don't know what to say.
After your vote has been counted, by the way, you may sit and... Right, but please stay, stay still. All right, don't run around. It's hard enough to count. After a row's been counted, and the tellers tell them you're finished, they may sit. But only after the tellers say you've been counted. That's why it's tight. Yeah. Center section may sit. The right side of the room, my left, you may sit down. Okay, if anybody's left standing over here, you may sit. Okay, can I call the no? Okay. No. Sorry, I'm waiting for the total. And then we will call the no's.
That's fine. We didn't have to stand to count. Those people really need to sit. It's really hard.
No, I get it. I mean, at least, I want the tellers working to my work, not to count the numbers in the seats. But I think they've been there, that's all. Maybe some of the others, maybe some of them first, by the pan.
Recount it. So all those in favor, please stand.
The whole section? Okay. Everybody over here, and this is the problem I've been worried about with people not sitting, we need to recount over here. So those in favor, sitting on the left side of the room, my right, in favor, please stand up and hold your card up again. You're absolutely right. No, I get it. I totally agree.
Only one. That's only one. I'm just saying. Just recount.
Like we thought it, did it again? Looks like we thought it, did it again. Nikki's shaking her head, hoping she got it counted. Okay, I made a decision. You may sit. Okay. We are having... If I have everybody's attention, where is Dawn? Dawn, you're getting your ballot after all. I'm not comfortable with the numbers. We're just gonna do it the old-fashioned way and do a ballot. So, we're gonna go straight to a ballot. Yes. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Um, I am within the scope... Can you come to a microphone, please? Come on, folks, we need a little order in here, which requires a bit of quiet. Thank you. Now, you had a point of order.
Yeah, my point of order is, as I understand it, if someone makes a motion to have a secret ballot, the Assembly has to vote on that.
When a motion is pending, that is true. I have the discretion, unless I'm told otherwise.
Okay, so it's a...
I have the discretion, since we've had two failed counts, I'd rather go to something that is sure and verifiable. So that's, I'm using my discretion as moderator to go to the ballot. That's what, the answer to the point of order. And I get to bang the gal. Point of order. Point of order. Yes.
If, if, if moderator, Mr. Moderator is gonna use his discretion, can I please ask you to consider Articles 3, 4, 5, and 6 together, so we don't have four secret ballots tonight, please?
Um, while I appreciate the sentiment and the creativity, no, we're not gonna skip the debate and go right to four. So, while they're setting up, I just wanna walk through the, the process one more time. There are two balloting stations that are set up. We're gonna start at the back of the room and work forward. As you line up for the side that is closest to the ballot box with you, remember to bring your green card. When you walk up to the, and if you're in the middle, just pick, go to the right or the left, your option. When you get up to the ballot box... When you get up to the ballot box, you're gonna have two things happen. First, you're gonna hand over your card, and a teller will mark it with an X to verify that you are a voter. You will then be handed a perforated ballot. On one side it says yay, on the other side it says no, or yes and no. You're gonna rip the perforated ballot, put whichever your vote is in the ballot box, and put the one you don't plan on using to vote with into the trash can, which is the discard pile. Then go back to your seat, please. The voting, once all the votes are in, will take place in the library. As I said before, you are perfectly welcome and entitled to observe the voting count, if you would like to. We're gonna try to keep the meeting moving, however, during the course of the downtime. This takes a moment to set up. Okay. Alright, starting in the back of the room, you may come forward in an orderly line in the aisles to vote.
You never get another X on your card tonight.
I know.
Here, all night. Buckle up, buttercup, it's gonna be a long night. I know, like forty-two articles on the wall.
Hey, how are you? I was listening to your wedding bands for summer. Looked like a good part, couple of good parties up there.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, I sure do. There you go. I hope it's the only one you need tonight. Oh, no problem.
Yep.
Got it? There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hoping this is the only X you need tonight. Can't promise.
It is to get it on the ballot. Yeah, so that the town can vote. If it goes down...
No cheating, no cheating. Oh, you're with this lot? No. Really hope no one needs another X tonight. I hope this is the last X I've put on your card. I hope it's been here all night, so maybe we're getting a collection. There's a lady over there with a bag of candy, and I'm about to go... I hope it's the last one you need.
Hello, good to see you. Thanks for coming, very excited to be here.
Oh, he'll survive. Oh, no. You kidding me? He's in the courtroom on a regular.
God, they just keep coming.
They're like your cause of trouble.
I'm not from there, but we've lived there for a long time. I still have a place there. Very official, flashbacks, back to your card. They're gonna call it itself, too. We're getting there, we're almost to the third row. We're getting there. We're almost to the third row. Turned into a high school frat party in here. What's happening?
If anybody hasn't gotten in line to vote, uh, now's the time to get up and get in line.
People in the back of the line over here, you can vote on this side. You don't have to stand in line.
Everybody voting?
I think that's it.
Just make sure...
No, my wife.
They're voting.
Yeah, that's it. When will you be the last one? Okay. Okay, you have it? Okay, let's help him. Okay. Ready? Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. While the vote takes place, we're going to go out of order on the articles and jump to seven and keep the meeting moving while the laborious task of counting takes place. But I do want to reiterate that any of you who wish to go and observe the count, you are more than welcome to do so, but you will miss the debate on Article 7, Syria, depending on how far we get before they come back with the vote. All right. Article 7, Ms. Perrine.
Microphone? Thank you. I, Ruth R. Perrine, move that the town vote to approve the wage and salary scale for fiscal year 2024 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board report.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion? All those in favor, take your cards. Hold them up and say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Article 8.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town fix the salary and compensation of each of the elected officers of the town as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended for fiscal year 2024 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board report.
Give a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Article 9.
I, Ruth R. Perrine, move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Septic Betterment Fund the sum of $22,730 for the purpose of making necessary payments to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust during fiscal year 2024 in accordance with the terms of repayment for community septic management program loan funds.
Second? Any discussion? You want to speak to the article? No. Hearing nothing? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Article 10.
Excuse me? Yeah, I move that Article 26 be, uh, considered before Article 10.
One minute. Takes two-thirds, right?
Point of order?
Do you have a motion for me? Do you have a written motion?
Is that a point of order?
Was that a point of order or a motion? I thought it was a motion.
That was a motion.
That's what I thought. Do you have it written?
No.
I need it written, please. We have paper up here if you need it and a pen. Wait. You can sit if you want to. As a reminder, all motions have to be in writing. Okay, we have a motion pending for Article 26 to be considered before Article 10. Is there a second? Okay. This is a majority vote? All those in favor, say... Oh, sorry. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. All those... We are... Okay, hold on, folks. Okay. I'm gonna ask for silence for a moment. I'm calling for silence for the moment. We have pending a motion to move Article 26 to be heard before Article 10. That motion has been seconded. It is now pending. I asked for discussion. No one went to... All right. Would you like to say something?
Yes. I would like someone to explain Article 26.
That's outside the scope of the motion. This is a procedural motion to move Article 26 in front of Article 10. Questions on Article 26 will be pending when we get to Article 26. Yes?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the motion.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Jack Gale. I live on Pond Street. Uh, we have a pretty full house tonight. The town meeting's clearly gonna go into tomorrow night. And Article 26 is a pretty important article. I think a lot of people here are interested in voting on it. And, um, uh, we may not all be able to be here tomorrow night. I think while we have such a full house, we ought to deal with such an important article. So I urge you to vote yes to moving the placement of the article, so we vote on that next. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no others. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we are now gonna hear Article 26.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise for general municipal purposes, which may include public roads, wetlands, replication, drainage, slopes, grading, erosion control, and other related uses, all associated with the Apple Street Ri- roadbed elevation and culvert replacement project, the fee simple or other interests such as easements in certain real property described in Article 26 of the warrant, and to transfer from the sale of real estate fund the sum of $8,000 for such acquisitions, and further to authorize the selectmen to execute any and all instruments necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Yeah, so I'll, uh, I'll give you all, um, because not everybody is, uh, up to speed on what's going on here, the, uh, Cliff Note version of, of this project. Um, as we all know, the Causeway floods regularly. And at, when that happens, uh, first responders and, um, uh, Public Works, people and others, need to travel around on Apple Street to try to get over to the other side of town. It's the only road in town that connects, um, when the Causeway is flooded. So, we've been working, um, and now the, now Apple Street has started to flood. In recent years, that's been flooding, blocking it off, which would then require, um, first responders to have to travel all the way out to 128 and around, adding about 20, 25 minutes to get from one side of town to the other. So we've been looking at a project, and the state has been funding, uh, an effort to raise the Southern Ave end of Apple Street, where there are a couple of low spots there that have gone underwater in the past. And we want to raise that up probably around four feet. Uh, you know, it depends, because it's an undulating road there. But it'll be upwards of four feet in places, and obviously much less in other places. As sea level rises more and more, and we expect it to, the state is recommending certain elevations. There's gonna be storm surge, um, waves and that sort of thing on the road as well. sort of thing on the road as well, so we have a little bit of free board built in. This is about an 850-foot section of roadway at the Southern Ave end of Apple Street. When the road is raised, it'll be sloped with a vegetated slope to keep sort of the rural character of that roadway. It'll be vegetated with trees and mulch and that sort of thing on one side, on the north side, which is the marsh side. On the other side, there will be a drainage swale to capture storm water and channel it off into the nearby brook and the wetlands associated. Remnant stone walls will be removed and rebuilt, trees of a certain size caliber, there's many that will be taken down. A large number of those are also deemed as hazardous anyway, and they would be coming down anyway. But there will be some changes to the area, obviously. The road will be widened a foot on each side, so two feet overall, guardrail installed in certain locations, and there'll be a culvert that's enlarged. It'll replace the existing 36-inch round culvert with a 10-foot box culvert, which would bring the culvert up to Massachusetts stream crossing standards to allow amphibians and other animals and fish to pass underneath the roadway rather than having to go over the roadway. So in order to do this, when we widen the road, even though, excuse me, when we're sloping the road, raising the road and sloping the sides of the road, we're keeping it at a 1 to 1.5 slope to try to minimize the impact on the surrounding areas. It's a pretty steep slope there, but it will go outside the limits of the town-owned property, the roadway, and onto adjacent butter's properties. We will need permanent easements along the road, generally in the order of, you know, as little as two feet to as much as 20 feet along the length of the roadway. There are six properties involved. The easements will range from about 300 square feet to 9,000 square feet. The 9,000-square-foot one is a long one mainly along the wetlands on the north side of Apple Street in that general area. The south... Most, all of these are non-buildable parcels of property. Three of them are conservation restrictions that can't be built on because of the nature of the restriction, and the others are not buildable anyway. So I'll just, I'll just go over real quickly what the square footages are on the south side. 129 Apple Street, 315 square feet, and that's for a drainage easement. 131 Apple Street's about 2,100 square feet. 135 Apple Street, which is a greenbelt property, 1,500 square feet. 1 Andrews Street, which has a property that it butts onto Apple Street, is 2,200 square feet, and that's under a conservation restriction. On the north side of Apple Street is 128 Apple Street, 3,000 square feet, and 0 Southern Ave, which it butts onto Apple Street as well, which is under a conservation restriction, is about 8,000, 8,800 square feet. These are all, all, as I mentioned, very narrow, unbuildable pieces of property, and as I mentioned in the article, it's about $8,000 worth of property.
You're next. Please state your name and address.
My name is Alexa Balbo. I live at 129 Apple Street with my husband Joe and our three young children. We learned about the town wanting to take some of our property by eminent domain, so we sought counsel to help us understand and navigate the situation. The attorney contacted the town on multiple occasions, requesting a meeting to discuss the issue, and never heard back. The solution the town is proposing is over the top and rushed. I would appreciate a vote of no on Article 26 to allow for more dialogue and a reasonable approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan? Brendan? I'm gonna ask Mr. Zubricki to address the issue of calls from council as a matter of fact from the town's perspective. Brendan?
So certainly several people did retain the same legal counsel, and the town had reached out independently to folks, but the council said, you know, "We prefer to go through me," is what he said. Until the town could actually have its appraisals done, because we had to get a sense of fair market value from an expert, there really wasn't anything to talk about, and that has since been done, and I know that our town council has reached out to their council with that information.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, this is Jay Tetsloff, 98 Western. There's a lot I could say about this, but I'm gonna focus on a letter that Brad Story wrote in the Gloucester Times. Can you not hear me all that better? Okay. Brad Story writes, "Eminent domain should be exercised in the direst of circumstances." The circumstances on Apple Street are not dire. Miles of other roads will be underwater well before Apple Street will. The 2018 report on the town's website lists areas of greatest risk, the causeway, of course, but also Eastern Avenue at Evans Creek by Farnham's, Conomo Point, Grove Street at Eastern, the gas station on Main Street which has buried gasoline tanks, and the landing road culvert. Apple Street is last on this list. Let's save them in a domain for a real emergency, please.
You may go.
I'm Janet Carlson from 24 Apple Street. I noted a few misleading statements in the FAQ handout tonight and also in something that was stated about Apple Street flooding, so I'd like to address three of them. It is stated that the road would be widened only two feet, and that's just a reference to the driving surface that would be widened from 18 to 20. And then there's the additional horizontal widening roadway and metal guardrails, and that takes it to a width of 30 feet, and the rocky slope on which nothing but weeds can grow, not blueberry bushes and not trees, that would extend the project to a total width of 50 feet. To do this, they'd remove dozens of 100-year-old trees, the canopy would disappear, historic stone walls, and of course, the wetlands. This destructive widening is the reason the town wants to use eminent domain, to make Apple Street look like a highway exit ramp. The second thing I want to mention is that the, has to do with the predictions of sea level rise, making flooding, and I'm quoting the paper, the FAQ sheet, a much more regular occurrence. This is the case for the causeway, we all know that. It is not actually the case for Apple Street. The last time it flooded was in 2018, five years ago, and according to the resiliency study of 2018 posted on the town's website, there is less than a 1% chance of flooding annually on Apple Street for the next three decades. At the public forum last November, we learned that Apple Street has flooded two times in the past 50 years. This flooding notion is theoretical, at least on Apple Street. It's real on the causeway, it's not real on Apple Street. The very worrisome and daily problem on Apple Street is speeding. Many of us are in favor of a compromise solution that doesn't widen the street and involve eminent domain. I'm in favor of repairing the culvert. Also, the causeway, we can't ignore that, and if it is underwater, we lose business tax revenue. The third point I'd like to make about the FAQ has to do with the construction grants, like as if they're gonna dry up and disappear if we don't vote yes tonight. It actually says Essex won't get a chance again. Really? I find it hard to believe between FEMA and the Commonwealth, this fabulous state of Massachusetts, committed to resiliency, that there will be less money in the future? In any case, it's not really relevant because there is current and pending litigation around this project. The current litigation is an appeal of the Conservation Commission document pertaining to the project and their conditions for approving it. The legal appeal challenges this in the light of the Wetlands Protection Act, and it will delay the project approximately nine months. So there really is no rush. We can relax about the grants. I'm opposed to this use of eminent domain for a theoretical problem, or at best a minor problem, and I'm not okay with the town taking our neighbors' land. I mentioned one litigation, and I can tell you that there's another one pending, and we taxpayers will be paying the cost of that legislation. Thank you.
Ms. Carlson raised a couple of points that I'd like Mr. Zubricki to address with regard to the facts in the FAQ.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So it is true that it's theoretical, but what we're being told by experts from the state and the federal government is that in the future, even Apple Street will flood much more regularly. The issue of taking the project and making it smaller, maybe perhaps coming up less in elevation, perhaps doing less length of roadway, presents a problem because in order to get the federal money, it is necessary to pass a very rigid test known as the benefit-cost analysis test. We actually had to utilize a consultant from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency to do that test. It's very complicated, and we were told that if we changed the project at all, we would not meet the threshold, and if we don't meet the threshold, you can't even apply for the federal funding. Our plan right now is to use a combination of federal and state funding to fund 100% of the, of the project. And so, and another thing that came up is the, the timing on it. It's important to understand that people that fund these things right now are looking for a project that represents what they call a retreat project. That's you have a road that floods, you're trying to make your next, your next path better, that would be Apple Street. And as soon as some other communities actually start doing that, there will be less interest in it. There's high interest in it right now. I also want to point out that when the town was offered, because it's a good corollary, when the town was offered federal funding, 90% funding for sewer ring back in the 1990s, the town decided to reject it, and the town ended up paying 100% for the sewer when it came time to actually do it, when the mandate came.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gil Freedon. I live at 104 John Wise Ave. Why am I voting yes on 26? I have a long list of bullet points that I could totally dazzle you with, but let's just suffice it to keep it to five. One, this isn't for me. I live on the Ipswich side of town with the safety building. This is for my friends over river. You need this. Two, Massachusetts Office and Coastal Zone Management believes that sea level rise is happening. State and federal government are money, are throwing money at anyone who's trying to mitigate significant risk, just like Brendan said, from coastal storms, flooding, erosion, sea level rise. Let's take it. Vote yes on 26. Number three, even if sea level rises, fake news, I have a reason for you to vote for this. There is a tiny pipe under Apple Street to let flora and fauna and water and animals cross underneath it. The pipe is woefully inadequate for the amazing wildlife that you know and you love in your heart, and that's why you're here in Essex. So raise up Apple Street, and the benefit to Bambi and Thumper and Frog and Toad will be vast, immediate, and daily. Vote yes on 26. And those first three points don't even matter, because the only thing that we're committing to is giving a fair pile of cash to a few of our neighbors so that the town can own the low-lying land immediately around Apple Street. That's right, eminent domain doesn't always mean land-taking, it means land-buying. In fact, the city of Beverly right now is having a meeting about an $8 million eminent domain real estate project on Cabot Street. Don't they wish they bought it when it was cheaper? If real estate proj... If real estate project... I mean, if you can find in your heart to believe, that woman said three decades, that in 30 years, your kids might need to raise Apple Street, would you rather buy it in today's real estate market or after the cost of estate, of real estate increases for 30 years when Apple Street might be waterfront property? Vote yes on 26. And just to reiterate your point, Brendan, free money. Jody reminded us that the town turned down state money to install the water and sewer infrastructure. I kinda remember that. My parents were taxpayers, I don't, and I wasn't paying attention. So a few years later, the town had to come up with its own, what was it? Was it $30 million for the project? I'm telling you, the state has a few smart people working at it. My dad was one of them. They think that we need this. They will pay for it. How arrogant do we have to be to second-guess them again? Vote yes on 26. Thank you.
I don't know if you do kids' parties, but I'm sure you could do a bang-up business. Would you please go next?
Karen Flynn, so I live on Pond Street, and I am disheartened to find that the people on Apple Street learned about this not through their neighbors of their town. We're a small town. It is, what our neighbors are asking, it sounds like, is time. Time to hear what's being proposed, to think about solutions. We're not Boston, we're not Cambridge, we're like, less than 4,000 people. How are they finding out about this, this way, that the town wants to take some of their land? I think, even paying for it, and I understand that, and I love animals too, and maybe we can come up with a solution that works for everybody. I don't think they're saying never, or this can't happen, but I think trying to vote on this tonight, when a lot of us don't understand fully what the impacts are to the families who are going to lose their land, is something we should all pause. We are a tiny town. It should not happen this way.
Dan Doucet on John Wise Avenue. I was the fire chief up until about three years ago. Sea, sea rise level is happening. The flooding that happens on the causeway is new, the way it comes in, the water comes over by Woodman's before it comes in from the backside like it used to. It is happening. You can sit here and debate that all day long. Apple Street did flood in 2019, 18. It came up, and/or I can tell you, I was out there. The causeway has three and a half feet of water on it. We have to get to the other side of town. It takes an additional 20 to 25 minutes. If you live on Conomo Point and you have a medical emergency, or your house is on fire, do you expect somebody to be there in a half hour? You gotta look at this realistically. If we lose both travel routes, public safety is greatly affected. I think we look back to, we're talking about the easements on properties and the grades. The reason the causeway wasn't done right was because the state didn't want to take time for the easements on the properties on the causeway. That's why that road isn't two feet higher like it should have been. So let's try to do it right. The easements are necessary. They're not infringing. This has been a four to five-year planning process. This isn't, didn't start last week. If people wanted to know about it, the information's on the town website, it's been on social media, it's been in the newspaper. Get involved. This isn't a secret, this has been out there. It needs to be done. Support it.
I'm gonna recognize Chief Paul Francis, who would like to speak about the public safety effects.
As Jody said, I'm the chief of police in town. I'm coming at this, obviously, from a public safety standpoint. Like Dan had said, yes, it might not flood it a lot, but what happens is when it does flood, we have the problem of trying to get from one side of the town to the other, and I know there are those who have said that what we should do is just put extra people on. We could put people on one side of town, put people on the other side of town, but that's problematic in a number of ways. For one thing, we may put two offices on one side of town and then two offices on the other side of town, but if the office is... the other side of town, but if the offices on one side of town get tied up on a call, and we need more backup, or we need, say, a town to come for mutual aid, they might not know where we are. They might not know the area. The other issue is, we need to be able to access, in the case of the police, we need to be able to access our police station if we make an arrest, if we have a situation where we have to come back. And we need to keep in mind, we don't have dispatchers now. So we have a safe vestibule. We get called back to the station on a regular basis, constantly, especially during the day. So we need to keep that in mind, and we need to be able to access both sides of town equally. If the causeway's flooded and Apple Street's flooded, that makes it next to impossible. We're going to have to go all the way around through Hamilton, we're going to have to go through Manchester to take 128 and come back to West Gloucester to go to Canomo Point. It's just very difficult for us. We need to think about this going forward. I understand, I understand the emotion of the eminent domain, but we really need to think about this from a public safety standpoint.
Thank you, Chief.
Gene Cornfield, 128 Apple Street. And yes, I am among those whose property is directly impacted by this. I absolutely support public safety. I believe we do need to address sea level rise, and believe there are viable solutions to this issue, none of which require taking of private property through eminent domain. So I'm steadfastly opposed to this article and the actual plan being proposed, not because of where I live, but independent of where I live, for some very common sense reasons, and I will briefly share five of them with you. First, voting yes on Article 26 means voting to take your neighbor's private property. Voting no means you don't believe the town should take private property in something that is not a dire emergency, not my property and not yours. Voting yes means you want your taxes to go up this year and every year to come to acquire the five property owners' property. $8,000? You heard the amount of square feet that need to be acquired on 850 linear feet on both sides of Apple Street, totaling probably about half an acre. Where in Essex can you get half an acre of land for $8,000? I mean, come on, common sense. It's going to cost a lot more than that, and then there's lost tax revenue that everyone in this room is going to have to make up for on that land that is no longer being paid for by the residents who own it today. Voting no means your taxes don't go up to pay for your neighbor's property, or for you to cover the annual tax shortfall that they're no longer paying. Voting yes also means you want to override the townspeople's prior stated desire to maintain Apple Street as a scenic road, established by vote in 1973. And instead, have the overall width tripled in size to nearly 50 feet with rusty metal guardrails. The euphemism is weathered steel. No, that's rusty old steel that looks like an old Pennsylvania mill town, and a 10-foot high, replacing the culvert with a 10-foot-high prefabricated industrial bridge, as was said earlier, making the entrance to Apple Street look like an on-ramp to the Mass Pike. Voting no means preserving Apple Street as a scenic road, one of the few designated as such in Essex. Voting yes means you want to see dozens of trees removed that cannot be replaced. Trees don't grow in the piles of crushed rock the highway engineering firm wants to use. All that grows in crushed rock are weeds. Voting no means maintaining the existing trees and shade canopy they provide. Voting yes actually means decreasing safety on Apple Street, as the wider road devoid of trees will encourage more people to speed, endangering pedestrians and their dogs, which happens now at the other end of Apple Street that's been widened. Voting no keeps this end of Apple Street safer and allows the exploration of many other solutions to address the less than 1% likelihood of flooding that the town is painted as something that would happen all the time. It won't, or at least, none of us can say it will. And yet, there are several other areas of town that all the data suggests do pose potential problems we should address, but Apple Street is not first among them. And to the extent there are issues on Apple Street we need to address, there are several alternative solutions to consider before we consider taking our neighbor's private property by eminent domain and forever ruin the special character and safety of our scenic road in the process.
That was quite a mouthful. I'm going to skip some of my bullet points. Danny already hit them, and Gilly, Gilly did a hell of a job on quite a few of them. I would like to point out that this is an opportunity to fix a section of roadway that does require attention. I'm going to put the flooding aspect of away for right now. Overall, the odds of flooding, especially in the near future, is fairly slim. The odds of the causeway flooding anytime in the future is fairly high, which means we still need to utilize Apple Street. 18 feet wide is the current pavement. Our fire trucks are 103 inches, add about another foot on each side for the mirrors, and they're basically 12 feet wide. 18 feet isn't enough for two trucks to pass in that section. And even better, if you swerve to the side, there's about six inches of shoulder before a three-to-four-foot drop on both sides. That's my bigger concern, is we've picked vehicles up. I was 47 years on part of the fire department. Over those years, we picked a lot of cars out of those ditches, and it was never pretty. The other aspect is the line of sight that would get corrected, where Apple Street, Andrews, and Southern Avenue meet, would be vastly improved. The number of crashes that we've had to deal with over the years in that particular intersection is exorbitant. I mean, it's, shouldn't have been happened, should have been corrected years ago. The 50-foot-wide thing is, that's not the roadway. The roadway is going to increase two feet. That's the state standards that we have to build to nowadays. It would be a lot simpler if they'd back off a little bit, let easements go through. We don't have to go through the eminent domain proceeding. The neighbors are the ones that are going to push that button and force us into it. Yeah, just speaking of the costs, if, for whatever reason, we're trying to respond through there with any one of our trucks except the forestry, they're all 103 inches wide, basically 12 feet with mirrors. If they do fall off, and get damaged, one, now we've completely blocked the road again. Second, $350,000 to $400,000 for an engine, over $1 million for a ladder truck, $300,000 to $400,000 for the ambulances. So, and that doesn't even, we could also throw in the DPW equipment and the police cruisers. They won't be able to respond to the other side of the street. I'm going to leave it at that. I've got a bunch more, but I think we've covered most of it. Thank you.
Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. Again, really quick, actually, fun trivia fact, I believe, please confirm this with Jim Witham and other members of the Essex Historical Society, but I believe the land we're actually all standing on now was seized by eminent domain from the Story family in the 1950s. Anyway, so Brendan in the town mentioned that construction grants wait, like time and tide, they wait for no man. Construction grants, you know, from the state and federal government don't wait either. That is true. Essex unfortunately does have a rather dubious reputation. We have got opportunities to pay for the trash service, to pay for a sewer system, to pay for a wind turbine on town land, and we all turn them down. So we have, kind of have this reputation of being a, you know, we never miss an opportunity to miss an opportunity. So let's not miss this one. Vicky.
Vicky Cataldo, 125 Rocky Hill Road. I'm one of the ones that has to come down Andrews Street every day to almost get hit, usually by people coming either way down Apple Street, because they're coming off of Southern Ave going way too fast, and coming up Apple Street and not looking, not realizing that there's another road there. But the main thing is, we always ask our elected officials to be proactive, to look forward, not reactive, which this town is really good at. But if we are asking them to be proactive and look forward down the road, maybe not in the next 10 years, but in 20 years or 50 years, as to what sea level rise is going to be doing to our town, we need to support them and be good about, what? Having, having the courage to support them and say, yes, you're doing a good job, and you're looking out for our future. Sea level rise is happening. I mean, it's evident everywhere. I mean, I work at Castle Hill, and you can see the dunes get eroded every year. So I really hope that we can vote yes on this, because we've kicked the can down the road so many times, and every time we do, we come back to it, and it costs us a whole heck of a lot more.
Lisa O'Donnell, Island Road, which also floods a lot, but doesn't lead to anywhere. Apple Street is really important because of where it does lead to. It connects the town. It's the only other road that public safety can access. This project isn't about whether we're going to have to do it or not, it's about when we're going to have to do it. The sooner we do it, the easier it's going to be, and the better our chances are for funding. I'm also going to ask Brendan to fact-check me on anything that I say that's incorrect. The thing that I would like to make a point of is this sort of distorted eminent domain, we're taking people's property. It sounds like we're booting people out of their homes and stealing their whole land. We are taking or looking, not even we, because I'm not part of this, I'm just a resident, but the town is looking to take a strip of land adjacent to the road to be able to complete the work, to put in some drainage, to move a couple utility poles and things like that. They will restore any of the construction work areas, so these are easements, these are not actually doing anything other than putting something else on the land at the edge of the road. And it's a small, thin strip that is not going to affect the property owner's use of their land. It's right, it's literally the edge of the road. So I just want people to understand that when we're talking about this whole eminent domain, it's eminent domain for an easement along the edge of the road, which any of us would likely, I would think, if someone came along Island Road and said we need to widen it because of public safety concerns, blah, 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 we need five feet of your land, I would say yes, because I see that there's a need for it. Anyway, I just want people to be clear that this eminent domain is for easements, and it's for completing the project, and it's not moving people out of their homes or anything like this. And also, this, you've heard from public safety officials talk about this, and they support it, and I think it's really not our right to second-guess our public safety officials. They're the ones who are taking care of us. They're the ones, they're asking the town to do this, to help them do their job protecting us. And who are we to say that we know better than them how they should protect us? So I realize that this is, you know, people are worried about scenic Apple Street, this is 12% of the length of the road. There will be work done as part of the project to not only replicate the wetlands, but to actually improve them. That was the other thing. This culvert crossing is essential, because this culvert is a tiny little pipe, and with increased flooding and increased storms, we actually run the risk of washing out Apple Street there. So this culvert will not only help preclude that event somewhere down the road, but it's also going to provide both a stream and a terrestrial passage for animals underneath. So it's a much better way to handle wildlife. So anyway, just some points I wanted to make, trying to stick to the facts.
Shelley.
Hi, my name is Shelley Bradbury at 79 Eastern Ave. From my understanding, in 2018, the Apple Street flooded for three hours in the last 50 years. And my concern is, that hasn't been addressed, that I would like to hear from the town, is that if this work is going to be done, Apple Street will be closed for eight to nine months, if all goes well. And so that raises huge safety concerns, and I don't know how the town is going to mitigate that. And I've never heard what they're going to do when Apple Street is closed and we know there's emergencies. How are you going to address that?
All right. Ed, you're going to go next, but I want to take her, Shelley's comment as a question. So who can address the schedule for the construction, proposed construction?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The project is expected to take, start on one construction season, take a break for the winter, and continue into the next season for construction. With respect to how the work will be phased, we would hope that for a lot of it, the road could be opened one lane. Certainly with respect to times when the causeway is flooding, we might even have to have construction suspended on Apple Street with a plan to have it open. That will all be addressed as part of the construction planning that will come later.
Thank you. Mr. New.
15 Western Ave again. The town in 1948 recognized there was a problem with Apple Street, and the crisis at the time was the bridge at Western Ave. So they petitioned the county, who had jurisdiction over these things in those days, and petitioned to have the road widened and a bridge constructed. And so the county approved it. They, in order to accomplish that, they laid out a wider road in the western part of Apple Street there, and took strips of land from people by eminent domain, because that was what was necessary to build the bridge and widen the road. I have, we signed a contract, the town of Essex signed a contract with the county to create that and have the county reimburse the town for all that cost. And it says, "And the petition, insofar as it relates to other portions of Apple Street not covered by this alteration, is left open for further action." So in 1948, they recognized that Apple Street had other sections that were inadequate and would need address in the future, but the county's no longer involved in those things. Now it's the state and the federal government managing it. And the second paragraph, the second sentence after that says, "And said road shall be known as a public highway forever." That was the agreement that the town made with the county in 1948, and they built the road. And now, the issue that they were referring to earlier is, there's other problems with Apple Street, and I don't see how you can call it a public highway forever if it's underwater. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Faith Guest. I'm at 35 Apple Street, also known as Apple Street Farm. So I, Apple Street Farm rise with the roosters, and so I'll do the best that I can to consolidate my brain cells, but I am a little tired. The first thing that I'd like to address is money. Money, money, money. We spent the first two hours tonight talking about a $289,000 override. People are worried about money. They're worried about their taxes going up. And I'm really sad to say that if we do have to force eminent domain, my understanding is lots down on Apple Street for two acres or less went for $565,000. So taking six parcels of land for $8,000, everybody, that is insanity. So taking six parcels of land for $8,000, everybody, that is insanity. That's not going to happen. The second thing that I want to point out is this is a four and a half million dollar budget. Can everybody hear me? I feel like my mic went down. Four and a half million dollar budget. So if we have to force eminent domain, which I'm clear we're going to, because I have met with all six butters and they are a hard no, with the exception of one, we will have to pay them for their land. And if we do that, in addition to that, being a grant writer and policy, that also negates us being able to get the grant for that four and a half million dollars, because the government will not provide a grant if we have to seize land by eminent domain. So we can add that to the budget as well. The third thing that concerns me greatly, while I'm not a party to the litigation, I am not a butter again, make no mistake, there is litigation. I did talk to my neighbors down on that end and they are proceeding, not because of the public safety issue, but because they take exception to someone coming in and seizing their land for some of the reasons that were specified tonight. Money, damage of the trucks. If we're worried about damaging the trucks, I can tell you an assurance that as you come down and you get into the S-turn by the conservation land, you're most certainly going to take off whatever parts on the truck as well. So we're going to have to pay for that regardless if we do this project or not. So when I look at that, the money is far above $289,000. It's eight, nine, 10, maybe 12 million dollars as we go year after year. That number keeps expanding. Safety. My friend on John Wise, I really invite you to come to Apple Street Farm. We have a plethora of animals and talk about Bambi and Thumber. They're already getting run over on Apple Street Farm. So if we want to talk about safety, we need to talk about the speeding on Apple Street Farm. When I come back from school, drop off, when you look at the bus, the kids get off the bus at the end, Alexa, I don't know if those are your children or not, I have a heart attack every day when I see those kids walking. They're already having to dodge other cars, high schoolers, everybody zipping down. If we make that a highway bypass coming off there, we are certainly going to have an accident with children. I also want to stand before you as a resident to say, there is current litigation of someone that's being, that was arrested for a DUI that almost killed me about six months ago. I was out front, got off of work, I work from home, went out to my mailbox to get the mail and the kid almost ran me over. Drunk DUI. We've called over and over and over again. The police are amazing. This is not a public safety complaint about our town. They've been amazing, but it is hard to manage already as it is. So that is also a tremendous concern. The last third and most important thing that I want to raise tonight is I am vehemently opposed to the topic of eminent domain. I think that Essex is a very special little community. I think it's why we all came here. And I don't love the tone tonight about the divisiveness among the community. I believe that there are a lot of things that we can discuss. I think my husband, I'm hoping, is going to take the mic in a little while, about options that we haven't even mentioned yet. We do run a lot of big pieces of machinery on the other farm that we operate and there are all sorts of different options that we could do. We spent $17 million on a public safety building, of which I voted yes for because I think it's incredibly important in our town. And there are options like bringing those trucks across the causeway and then when they come back, if they are flooded, maybe we could pressure wash them. Maybe we could clean them off and make sure that they're cleaned that way. Thank you so much. So in addition to that, there are other pieces of machinery I let my husband talk to that we could maybe help and support our public safety officers. But I am really asking our neighbors to think about, are you comfortable with eminent domain? It is not a sharing of an easement. It's not a sharing of a piece of land and oopsie daisies, we just want to borrow it. It is saying to our neighbors, we have no consideration for the fact that you went all in to buy in that piece of land and we're going to take it from you. That is something that I think we all want to be concerned about moving forward in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Brendan to address a couple of the factual points in the presentation.
So with respect to the money, the grant makers at the state and the federal level are both requiring us to show a number of things before we even apply for a grant. One of those things is, do we have control of all the property that is necessary to have the project done? So in fact, it's the other way around. We have to actually show that as we apply. With respect to what the town is asking to utilize along the side of the road, it's an easement. It is not taking over in fee simple the property or even a large part of the property. It is just an area and we had to have a professional appraiser arrive at those numbers. The reason why the number seems low in comparison to buying a whole parcel is because it is just land that right now is unbuildable land in the first place. A lot of it is actually wetlands and there are reasons for land being that low in value in this particular situation, including the fact that eminent domain law itself does not get into damages when we're talking about a road project. So there are, there are many reasons why that number is low and certainly we're not looking to take over somebody's parcel as Lisa pointed out.
Thank you.
I'm Natasha Taylor, 67 Apple Street. I love firemen and policemen and DPW workers and I think that all Essex residents need to be safe. And my biggest concern here is that the flooding of the highway, of the causeway is inevitable. The widening of that end of Apple Street creates a false sense of security. I, from living on Apple Street, I can name you five other locations on Apple Street that are more treacherous than the southern end of Apple Street. I think that taking that property by eminent domain makes the other susceptible areas that are low lying also subject to eminent domain and for that reason, I suggest voting no.
Christopher Wolf, 4 Saginaw Creek. I respectfully move the question. Is there a second? Second. All right. The motion is to move the question. Right. Just double check. Which requires a two-thirds vote. So first of all, I'm now going to get a little more insistent than I was in the past because I don't want to repeat the problems we had with voting before. So if you want to vote, find a seat. If you don't want to vote, you don't have to sit down. But for voting purposes, I'm going to ask people to sit down. There are plenty of empty seats to do that. Once we finish the vote, you can get up. But until the vote is over, if you want to vote, please find a seat. And we're going to maintain that on the rest of the voting this evening. And if it happens any subsequent night. So. Just waiting for somebody to sit. Okay. The motion before the town is to move the question, which requires a two-thirds vote. Here are little cards. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to the article. We are now voting on Article 26. Yes, Mr. Brendan. On the one we just voted on, the next one. Okay. Thank you. We are now voting on Article 26. Article 26 is the eminent domain taking with regard to Apple Street, which we have been debating. This requires a two-thirds vote. So. All those in favor, you can stay seated, but hold up your cards, please. Say aye. All those opposed? Motion fails. I so, I so declare motion fails.
Move to reconsider the motion.
Excuse me, I couldn't hear you.
I move to reconsider the motion.
Is there a second? Okay. The motion pending is to reconsider the vote on Article 26. This requires a two-thirds vote. Any discussion?
We want to reconsider this motion so that the vote that we just have, just had, holds. Otherwise, it may be reconsidered in the future when the same constituency is not here. So just vote the way you did to reconsider the motion and, and we're going to vote it down.
All right. Just to clarify, the vote is not to reconsider Article 26. The vote is whether you choose to revote on Article 26. So if the vote fails, the vote with regard to Article 26 stays. If the vote passes, we then revote on Article 26. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion fails. All right. I'm going to read. We're going to go back to Article 3. Would like order in the room, please? And I know it's been a long night and I really appreciate the patience that everyone has displayed. I'm going to read the vote with regard to Article 3. The votes in favor of Article 3, 254. The votes opposed, 175. The article carries.
Mr. Moderator? Can I make a motion to reconsider Article 3?
We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to reconsider Article 3. That has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Sure. I want you to vote no, because I know that there are a lot of people here with little kids and you're paying a lot of money for a babysitter. It's great if you can stay because there's so many important things that we have to decide, but let's secure this. And the school budget is Article 4 and we've got all these other things to do, but if you would just vote no on this, that would be great.
Any other discussion? Okay, once again, I'm going to clarify. We're not voting on Article 3. We've already done that. We are voting on the motion to reconsider the vote on Article 3, which requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye and raise your cards. All those opposed? That was unanimous. Other than the, anyway. All right. Now going to take Article 4. It's all yours.
I Teresa Whitman, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,434,813 to fund the town's assessment from the Manchester Essex Regional School District. Said sum to be calculated solely in accordance with the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts, with respect to the formation of a regional school district, as most recently amended by evoking and approving the provision found in Paragraph 4 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B, allowing district members to reallocate the sum of their required local contributions to the district in accordance with the regional agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Is there a second?
May I make a comment? Just for all the people leaving, this is going to take like not much more time. This is the actual budget approval, so I would just ask a tiny bit of patience on this. I said it all before.
Yes.
Elizabeth McKean, 35 Lufkin Point Road. I make a motion to move the article.
Is there a second? All right. All those in favor of moving the article, say aye. All those opposed? We're on a roll here.
Rob, it's given 18 Main Street. Is it my understanding that we're just about a vote on an $8 million budget with no discussion at all?
Apparently. All right. So we are now back to voting on Article 4. All those in, this is a, this is, this is not a two-thirds vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 5.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote for the motion on Article 4.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to reconsider the vote on Article 4. Would anyone like to be heard? Are you, no, okay. If you stand up, you're going to be asked to talk. All right. So we have a motion to reconsider Article 4. It's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion fails. We move on to Article 5. Azanga Haro, the platform is yours.
Very happy I didn't lose these. I Alvin Gaharo, move that the town vote to raise or appropriate the sum of $56,186 for the purpose of supplementing the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District fiscal year 2024 assessment, provided that the amount authorized, it was in my sight, herein shall be contingent upon the vote of town election to assess the additional real estate and personal property tax in accordance with the provisions of two and a half so-called.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes.
I just want to say like right now, we've got 21 students as of October 2022, 21 students through the four years of high school. If you haven't been over to the tech recently, it's an amazing school. They do tours. You can, if there's a group going on, I highly recommend it. And there's also, like everybody else, a social media page to see what the kids are up to. Get involved and look to see what these kids are doing. It's amazing. Thank you.
Kevin Cook, 54 Martin Street. I move the article.
I'm going to ask you if you would consider withdrawing that motion because I suspect we're going to vote.
Fair enough.
Thank you. All right. We are voting on the article, Article 5, which is the override vote in connection with the Essex Tech budget. This requires a, oh no, I'm sorry. This is majority. Excuse me. This is not the override vote. This is the Article 5 vote. This is not an override. So this takes a majority. Oh, majority, right, right. I'm sorry. Sorry, folks. Been getting a long night. We're going to try this one more time. Okay. Since Article 5 is a majority vote, this is in connection with the override with regard to the Essex Tech budget. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I Ruth Arpreen, move to reconsider the vote on motion for Article 5.
Is there a second? Any debate? Hearing no discussion, we are now voting on the motion to reconsider the vote on Article 5. This is just on whether we're going to reconsider Article 5. It's not actually the reconsideration. This takes a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion fails. Now Article 6.
I Alvin Gaharo, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $311,984,000 to pay the town share of the operating capital cost for the Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School District for the fiscal year... Technical School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023.
Is there a second? Okay. We're gonna go right to a vote then. Would you like to say something?
I just want to clarify, did you say there were 21 students from Essex?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one students of Essex.
As of October.
And it's 300 and... How many thousand?
The article...
311... I just gave it. 311, 94.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I, Ruth Arpreen, move to reconsider the vote on the motion for Article 6.
Hearing no discussion. We are voting once again on a motion to reconsider. This takes a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion fails. All right, folks, it is now 11 o'clock. And I applaud people for having gotten as far as we have. We can do it? I'm gonna... I'm gonna ask the town as to whether you see fit to continue meeting, or if you would like to adjourn and move to another night. Would someone make a motion? Okay, we have a motion pending to adjourn, and we have a second. Yeah. Eddie? Ed? I'm gonna need that, I'm writing. We haven't voted on anything yet, so please, we'll just wait a moment, then we can vote on the motion that's pending. Thank you. I think I have to write it down and have everyone watching. I've got a motion to move our... Ed?
That's all right. That's true. There you go.
Thank you. I know, I know, I know. They're gonna... Yeah, no, I got it. I'm telling you, I'm not taking it out. No, I understand. I understand. I'm just giving you a heads up. All right, the motion before the floor for Mr. Neal is that the town meeting be recessed until 7:30 PM tomorrow, May 2, 2023. Any second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I have discussion. I'm curious if town meeting would consider hearing one more article before we recess. We have our Conservation Commission cannot be with us tomorrow night?
No. 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 No.
So the Conservation...
Folks, if you have a point of order to make, you address it to me. I know everybody's tired, people want to go home. There is a motion pending and a discussion also pending. So Ms. Prene, please...
So I'm asking town meeting to consider allowing the Conservation Commission to present their article this evening regarding the wetlands, or the bylaw, because we don't, won't have commission agents with us tomorrow evening.
Any further discussion?
I suspect that the Conservation Commission's debate will be lengthy, and I think we should do it tomorrow night. Thank you.
Any other discussion? That's the motion. That's the motion. If you're seeking to make a motion, you would have to make a motion. Okay. All those in favor?
Hold on. Excuse me. Right here. I'd like to make a motion to amend the meeting to continue this to a week from today.
All right, you'd have to write it down. But I just, just, I need, I need to note something. Moving the town meeting for a week would mean we would be voting on Election Day, which means your town meeting would be after the election on articles that have been voted on tonight, which I am positive has never happened before in this town. But if you want to make the motion and you want to write it up...
I'll withdraw the motion, but I think we should just find a time that we can actually present the articles that people has spent a lot of time working on. But I understand.
I hear the concern, but it's not germane to the motion. All right, the motion is to amend the meeting... Excuse me. The motion is to recess this evening and continue the town meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 PM, right here, May 2, 2023. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
While... While the objections were loud, they did not care. We are, we are recessed until tomorrow night, 7:30, same place. Thank you.